Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Let us stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda in caucus meeting, Lacy Elk's presentation, Bill Flans to the Lacy kids.
Yes. On behalf of the Lacy Elk Lodge, number twenty-five eighteen, I would like to present this track to the food bank of Lacy for fifteen hundred dollars to help the needy in the community.
Phil Mark, on behalf of our two-hundred-and-thirty families that really need the help of the township here, the help of the committee, on behalf of our crew, our volunteers, thank you very much.
We're going to set up a corner in our lodge, we have almost two thousand members, we're going to ask the membership to donate the needed necessary goods and if they're having a good time, for quarterly donations, so we can.
Thank you again.
And we will forget you for Thanksgiving and for Christmas donations.
Mr. Peters, do you, um, oh, thanks, I'll take that check. Mr. Peters, do you guys, currently does the food bank have that backpack program going on?
Yeah, they do. Laura Croce handles that for the Lacy kids.
Why don't you give that a little explanation to the audience and the cameras, because I know we're edging into school time?
Okay, Laura Croce, she's a fireball for the Lacy Food Bank, she handles the kids programs, she not only does the backpacks back to school, she does Christmas gifts. It seems every month they have some kind of activity for the kids. Halloween, they give costumes, Easter, they give baskets. She goes all out for the kids. There's over two hundred kids in our plant list, seven hundred people, like I said, two-hundred-and-thirty families, and she is a fireball. We're all volunteers there, and without people like you in the committee here, we couldn't do what we do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You have the floor for a little bit, huh?
I just wanted to tell everybody on September ninth, our lodge is having the biggest fundraiser for veterans. Last year, we had over a thousand people. There'll be food all day, wine and beer, and last year, we raised about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and another seventy-five thousand for homeless vets. It's twenty-five dollars, if you can come out and support us, you can eat and drink all day, and I believe it's twenty-five dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys can sneak out if you want to.
He was already jumping before I said it!
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much for everything.
All right, we have quite a few, there's a lot of activities going on, and can you imagine, we're already starting to go into fall. First is the Forkett River Presbyterian Church, which they are having their annual fall flea market slash garage sale on September fifteenth, it is indoors. They also are requesting to post signs in advance of the event. This has been reviewed by the zoning officer, has been approved, I just need a motion authorizing them to have this special use.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next would be the Trademark Dance Academy, which is located on Manchester Avenue here, basically on the side street here. They're having a fundraiser yard sale and car wash. The car wash is August nineteenth from ten to three in the parking lot, they have outlined their traffic flow plan. They're also having a yard sale, excuse me, on September sixteenth, which is a Sunday, again in the plaza and along the sidewalks, this has been reviewed and approved by the zoning officer, I need another motion on that.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
An additional one is the Lacy Memorial Funeral Home, which is located on Lacy Road as you get towards the parkway. They are looking to host a fundraising event with the business and professionals, women of Southern Ocean County. It is Saturday, October thirteenth, they're going to host a Halloween-themed walk-through through the funeral parlor, the event is completely inside. They're also going to offer psychic readings and light refreshments. The event will feature items that already exist within the funeral home, as well as live costume actors moving throughout and amongst the guests. The original layout of the funeral home will not be modified in any way with additional structures, no pyrotechnics as well, the public areas will be clearly marked and sufficiently lit to ensure the safety of the guests at all times, and both exits are clearly marked and the fire inspections are current, and they may invite a food truck on the premises, which will be licensed as well, located in the rear of the parking lot. The zoning officer has reviewed this, has approved it with the permission of, that they do get a special event permit from the New Jersey State Fire Inspector's Office, just to be sure, so I just need a motion on that if we're willing to approve this.
Actually, we had this last year, and we had a major concern with it last year, it was going to be a haunted house in an existing funeral home, which I had definitely had an issue with. I'm seeing this, you know, now for the first time, and I understand zoning has, doesn't have a problem with the use being used for that purpose, but the reality of this is there's very limited parking there, you know, there's no parking plan here, there's no special officers identified on this thing, so my recommendation would be we carry it to the next meeting and let's get some more information, because you're talking about food trucks, you're talking about a lot of people coming in and out of that building, and it's, you know, going to be very congested, we have to have some idea where all that's going to, you know, be placed.
I agree with you guys, I'll second that.
Yeah, along with fire and life safety, there may be issues with the licensing.
That's my biggest concern.
Not only fire and life safety, I mean, if you're a licensed mortician over there, then there could be concerns with the Department of Community Affairs as well, or the licensing authority, this certainly be, would appear to be being used out of scope. So, as supportive as we want to be to the businesses in the town, and we do, I think it's prudent to just sit and revisit it.
Yeah, we need more information.
More information, that's what we're saying at this point.
I agree one hundred percent with this.
Yeah, but I made a second, so I just need an all-in favor to carry it to the next
meeting or until we have further information.
Move it.
Okay, and the final one is the Lacy United Methodist Church, Community Options is a group that has a business here in Lacy, they are looking to have a public awareness fundraiser to make awareness of their upcoming five K fundraiser on October sixth from twelve to five. At the United Methodist Church, there'll be four bands there, as well as five food trucks, and they're utilizing the parking lot there. They are making arrangements with the police department to have some police department coverage there for the event. This has been reviewed with our zoning officer and has been approved. The only reason why they're not having it at their site at community offices is because they are very limited to the size of their parking and everything, so they had made contact with Pastor Applegate to get approval of using their site.
Right, yeah, I had spoken to her, they have plenty of parking, yes, I.
Yeah, yeah, there's plenty of parking there, it's going to be kind of closed off like we do with the food bank and stuff to protect any pedestrians and stuff, and no vehicle or traffic where the bands and all the pedestrians will be.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for that. And the final one is Clean Water Action, who annually canvass our towns, they were looking initially for July twenty-fifth through August thirty-first, but they did miss our July meeting, so they have since asked for, to go through September fifteenth with their canvassing, they like to do it from four to nine, we basically have to approve it, but we do always ask for them to be aware of the dusk hours, since it will start in September to get unfortunately darker earlier, and to not be in the communities walking around during the dark, because it does instill fear in the residents, you know, to walk through the community, so I just need permission to sign off on the form and send it in.
Move it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Did they say, Veronica, when exactly they're going to be going door-to-door?
No, what they do is they.
Will it be weekends?
No, they do normally, yeah, both, seven days a week, they normally do it, and they do drop off a list of people that will be soliciting throughout the community to the police department with ID badges, and they do wear ID badges with photos on them as well.
Okay.
So they are registered with the police, because, you know, again, I see people walking through my neighborhood, I call the police as well to say, hey, listen, you know, because it's scary now. So they are aware of that, and they do, you know, they're just public opinion surveys that they're getting.
Great.
But they do come properly badged.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else to add on to this agenda?
Nope.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn from this agenda?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can go right into the township now?
Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Let us salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-seven, authorizing the acquisition of all lots in block eighteen fifty-three and eighteen fifty-four.
Okay, just so you know, that I'm going to read one different block number, because based on some review of the map, I inadvertently put the wrong block number in there, so it's going to be an ordinance to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of the fee simple interest in all of block eighteen fifty-two and all of block eighteen fifty-three. Initially, it was going to be eighteen fifty-four, but we pushed it back another lot line. This is to meet our Fair Share Housing Act with the Affordable Housing, to build an additional seventy units adjacent to our units over here behind the municipal building, so that it stays all within this one site, and I need to enter into this ordinance in order for us to move forward with negotiating with the property owners to acquire these lands. This is first reading, can I have a motion?
Just one comment on that, this is also to satisfy the litigation that the court has pending.
Yeah, fair share housing, right.
The court currently has us in a hold pattern before they'll approve our agreement with them until we come up with a plan, so this will be that.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-four, authorizing a deed restriction on block nineteen hundred, block two oh two.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the implementation of deed restrictions on property owned by the Township of Lacy, known and designated as block nineteen hundred, lot two point oh two, in the Township of Lacy. This is second reading of this ordinance, it is a parcel of property that will be deed restricted and therefore restricting any future development on the site. We will be getting paid two thousand dollars per acre for the deed restriction on it, it will be deed restricted via mitigation property that Walters Development Group needs, which for a project that they're working on in Stafford and in Ware Town or Ocean Township, and they're allowed to do off-site mitigation. Motion, second reading here.
Second reading, I'd like to open it up to the floor.
Seeing no make motion to close the floor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-five, authorizing the acquisition of an easement on block sixteen oh two, lot seven through nine.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of an easement on portions of block sixteen oh two, lot seven through nine, from James and Madeline Stapleton, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash, five, A-one. This is a small easement that we needed on various pieces of properties on block sixteen oh one, lot seven through nine, from the Stapletons, in order for us to complete the railroad avenue extension project. Second reading, open the floor.
Second reading, I'd like to open it up to the floor.
Seeing no make motion to close it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of an ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-six, amending and supplement the Township Code to amend chapter three twenty-three, vehicle and traffic.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-three of the Township Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, so as to create section three twenty-three seventeen point one entitled Parking Prohibited for Repair Vehicles. So what this says is that no person shall park or leave a standing, leave or leave standing any vehicle on any public street for repair of the vehicle except in the case of emergency. So I'm not saying you get a flat tire that you can't repair it there on site, what I'm saying is, is you decide to change your oil, you can't do it in our roadways, you can't take the transmission, you can't replace the motor, you know, under emergencies, you can obviously do those things, but not to repair cars in our streets. Second reading, open the floor.
Seeing no comments, motion to close the floor. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two hundred, appointing a police officer.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Randall Pliss as a full-time police officer with the Township of Lacy. This new officer is coming with us, trains from the Ocean County Sheriff's Department, it's an inter-local government transfer, he will be ready to go and qualified tomorrow, so I wish him a lot of luck, and he happens to be in the audience this evening, and I invite him to stand up and to introduce himself.
Gary, would you?
Again, I could, I know, just for the audience, the chief is normally always here, but Chief DeBella is away on vacation with his family right now for a few days, and I had asked Officer Pliss, even though we haven't voted yet, you are going to be Officer Pliss in a minute, to just come out tonight so the rest of the committee, you know, got to know who you are and all, but, you know, it's a real great transport for us, because I know you've come very highly trained, but from the sheriff's office, you know, Sheriff Mestronardi speaks very highly of you, and we're very fortunate, we're very happy to get you down here, so we look forward to a lot of good years, and we hope you retire out of here in twenty-five years and, you know, have a great career in Lacy.
I think he's a thirty-year.
Thirty-year?
Yeah, I think he might be after you here thirty years, yeah.
We'll take you from thirty, so, but it's a great place to, you know, work and a great community. I think you live off of Sunrise.
So you're getting out of his dress already?
Well, no, I'm driving down to Sunrise to come over here, and I see a truck coming up, I said, boy, he looks very familiar, like I saw you yesterday, so, I, you know, we truly wish you the best, and, you know, to your family, congratulations, we're very happy to get him, so.
So, I don't think you underscore enough, Committee man Quinn, the fact that the young man comes trained already from a fine agency in Sheriff Mestronardi and the sheriff's office, so that's great news for the taxpayers, as well as to hire the young man here to keep us safe, and hopefully have some outreach into our schools too, and I'm very excited about it, and thanks for coming aboard.
What badge number are you going to be?
One zero eight.
Wow, I know, right, right, Mr. Lattelier? What were you, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Once we, we're going to vote now, and you know, certainly it's, you know, going to be great to get the vote done, but once we vote, I'm sure your family would rather go out and celebrate and have dinner rather than sitting here, so certainly feel free to take over there for this.
I'll see you tomorrow. All right. Motion on this resolution, please.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
All right, you're good to go.
Congratulations. Take care, have a good night, everyone.
Seventy people since Jimmy, isn't that amazing? Seventy people since you, huh? Wow.
That's a little bit.
Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh one, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center. Basically, the change in this agreement is the fact that our initial agreement that we had reached the settlement on included a property settlement with Allies Inc. for another piece of property in Lacy. Allies Inc. no longer is in the affordable housing business, so we couldn't, you know, keep that in our contract, so we had to come up with an alternative, which is the site over here that we're looking to purchase additional properties for the Walters site.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana, Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh two, authorizing the execution of a contract for the community energy aggregation contract, I'm sorry.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the award of consulting services contract in connection with the implementation of the Township of Lacy's community energy aggregation program. As you know, back in two thousand and thirteen, we entered into a joint agreement with Stafford Township for community-wide energy aggregation, that that contract is due to expire, and we need to look to go out for another contract, we are now going back to Gable Associates to be our consultant on this. We, as in Lacy Township, will be the lead agency at this time, there's no other towns that are signing on, but there could be, so we will go out to bid again for community-wide aggregation and solicit additional bids to see if we will, one, return to JCP and R, two, go to another third party.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh three, appointing a bus driver for the Recreation Department.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing the bus drivers for the Recreation Department. We are appointing William Fisher at thirteen dollars an hour.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh four, appointing special legal counsel.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Christopher J. Dasty as special legal counsel for the Township of Lacy. This is on an as-needed basis and for various conflict matters.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Steve.
Yes, that's correct. And Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh five, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Typhoon pumper.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Absolute Fire Protection Company Incorporated for one Typhoon Pumper model HC-oh-four under the Houston-Gallison Cooperative Pricing Contract for the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company. This is being awarded under a cooperative pricing system, this is for a pumper for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company, the total amount of this contract is five hundred and seventeen dollars, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eleven dollars and three cents, yeah, I wish it was five hundred and seventeen dollars.
I'd have to buy a couple of them.
There is a prepayment option that the town has in order to save on the bonding of this, and at this time, we have not looked at if we're going to do a thirty percent down payment upfront, fifty percent, eighty percent, or a hundred percent. I can tell you, I'm not doing a hundred percent upfront, because I don't have the product here, but I will be talking to the CFO as to which way is the best for us to go in order to save us some money on the financing of this.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh seven, authorizing the execution of a CDBG grant agreement.
Did we skip to?
Yes. I'm sorry.
I apologize. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh six, awarding a contract for the purchase of a G-two gas detector.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Sensit Gold G-two detector for the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company to Sensit Technologies in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. This goes along with the fire truck, in order for us to award it under the fire truck, it was going to cost me thirty-three hundred dollars, so by going directly to the vendor, I was able to save a couple of bucks and get it for twenty-eight forty-four.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh seven, authorizing the execution of the CDBG grant agreement.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the county of motion for the community development block grant. Okay, this year is one of, we're on even years with the community development block grant, we are receiving thirty-four thousand dollars, and this will be for housing rehab. So, low-income houses that have items such as windows, HVAC, door, exterior doors, roof problems, hot water heaters, that would qualify, and there is a list that the county keeps of Lacy residents, we can help them and offset it, they have to sign a second mortgage with the Township of Lacy, and they have to remain in the home for ten years, or else at the time of closing, they do have to pay it back, depending on how many years they had left on the installment agreement, and they don't have to pay back for these improvements at all if they meet the qualifications. We've done this a number of years ago, and in fact, just last year, I canceled the majority of those mortgages, because they met the ten-year retention, so, you know, and they do also add those homes to our Affordable Housing list as qualifying residences.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh eight, authorizing a change order for the railroad avenue extension project.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract with PNA Construction for the Railroad Avenue Extension Project Phase One. This is change order number four, it's between all change orders one, two, three, and four, it's been a total of a net increase in the project cost in the amount of three point two percent. So, at this point, this change order is an increase of ten thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, and has to do with additional storm drains that had to be moved and lowered within the right-of-way.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two oh nine, certifying the governing body as reviewed to twenty-seventeen audit.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, certifying to the local finance board that all members of the governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year two thousand and seventeen.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two ten, placing a lien on block one oh one point one two, lot twenty-one for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacy, County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at nine oh nine Sarasota Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costing the amount of two hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 211, placing a lien on block 822, lot 5, for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1012 Laurel Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costing the amount of a hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 212, canceling taxes due to a one-hundred-percent-disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing tax collector to cancel 2018 taxes due on a property granted the one-hundred-percent-disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block 935, lot 30.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 213, authorizing the refund of a building permit fee.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a letter of no interest fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. And this was a duplicate. It was asked for twice in error, and the refund is fifty dollars.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 214, authorizing the refund of a building permit fee.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing refund of building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. This is for a fee for installation of a solar that the property owner has decided to not move forward with. The total amount after we minus out the plan review and the DCA fee, we are refunding two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 215, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018 dash 216, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of eleven million, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes, with noted extensions D-0400 and H-1572.
And Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Okay.
Month they report.
Yeah. Okay, for the month of July, the Municipal Clerk's Office Collector receipts the amount of five thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. For the month of June, the Municipal Court Collector receipts the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. For the month of July, the Community Development Department Collector receipts the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and two cents. For the month of July, road opening permits were collecting the amount of four thousand fifty dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and truck parking in the amount of two thousand fifty dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of July 12, 2018.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of July 12, 2018.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for the Rotary Club of Forkett River, Lenoka Harbor PTO, Women's Club of Lacey, and the LTHS Booster Association.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have quite a few add-ons, and I'd like to be patient with these tonight. First is going to be Resolution 2018 dash 218. It's a resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Grant application to install a new traffic signal at the Haynes Street and Lake Barnicot Drive intersection that will improve the walking and biking environment for the students. This, again, is, this is authorizing us to proceed and the engineer to proceed with an application on our behalf, hoping to get some funds for the state, from the state of New Jersey under Safe Routes to School to offset the cost of that traffic light. So at this point, we are making application. The applications are due mid-September, so I, I'm just asking to proceed.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2019. It's a resolution attached to Lacey, County of Ocean, State, New Jersey, in support of HR-3929, which is known as the Stranded Nuclear Waste Accountability Act of 2017. And I know that all of yous are familiar with this and with the fact that Oyster Creek will close this coming fall and that there will be nuclear waste currently on the site once they do close and have to remove it to the safe storage site. And HR-3929 proposes to compensate communities in which nuclear power plants have, that have ceased to, ceased generating electricity and now stores spent fuel on-site. The bill will recognize that communities should be compensated for taking on spent fuel long after the federal government committed to taking it on, for their burden. So we are just asking for our local congressmen and the supporters of this bill to please get this moving in, you know, in the House of Representatives.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
And my final add-on is Resolution 220. It's a resolution attached to Lacey County, County of Ocean, State, New Jersey, authorizing the planning board to undertake an investigation on block 1852, lots 1 through 48 and 1853, lots 1 through 48, as a possible area in need of redevelopment for which powers of eminent domain may be exercised pursuant to 48,12, eight, six. Again, this is all part of our fair share housing settlement agreement, and these are all the items we need to put in place in order to satisfy the courts. This will be moved, sent down to the planning board for their review and consideration.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on.
Comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's get right to it. I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, we were called to a breakfast meeting.
Last week.
Last week with the power plant, and it was at that point in time they announced that they had sold the power plant. Exelon sold it to a company called Holtech out of Camden, New Jersey, and it was explained to us, and they did a Q and A, and it was, it was very informative. Couple of things I think we need to discuss or talk about is that the company that's going to be doing the decommissioning is now currently working on the one in Chernobyl and two in Japan. And they did the Zion out there in Michigan, and they got it back to the standards that it required in ten years. So we, and they anticipate doing that for Exelon, the power plant down there. So we now have a timeframe that we can move by. And I did ask the Dr. Singh, who was the owner of Holtech, if he was going to help the township redevelop that piece of property. And he immediately jumped up and said, yes, he actually owns, will own that piece of property. Holtech will own that piece of property down there. In the conversation, he talked about something he called the big battery, which is something that stores electricity, so when it goes down, they'll be able to do it right from there. And I'm sure that's one of the reasons why they bought it. This is a high-tech company. It's about fifteen hundred people, engineers, scientists, you name it. These are well-paid people that do the job. And my guess is once he gets done in ten years, they get this thing back, and he's going to do some work down there. It's going to draw some extra companies that come in that will be high-tech. So I think this is, in overall, a good thing. You know, people are asking us, well, what about it? Understand this, this is a private deal between two companies. We weren't in the room, we didn't have a seat at the table. There's not a whole lot we can do about it. Okay? There's a lot of money on the table. We hope that the NRC and the state will be regulating them. We'll be looking over their shoulders as they go through it. But first impressions were good, and I'm pleased with what we saw two, a week ago. I have no problem with this whatsoever. I think this is a good step for Lacey. Moving on from that, we had National Night Out. That was two nights ago. That was in another excellent event that we have in Lacey. It's always good to see, see the people walking around, talk to some of the vendors that were there, and they had a good time. Huffy Wallace Park is now the grand reopening, which was the first original park in Lacey, back in the pines. We reopened that about two Saturdays ago or three Saturdays ago, and it was a good time. It's nice to meet the Wallace people, very nice people, and that's a great park over there. Summer camp ended today, okay? Our summer camp. So six hundred and ninety-nine kids are going to wake up tomorrow and not go to camp. That means they're going to be out in the streets, they're going to be playing and so forth, so it's time to put the antennas up and be a little bit more careful when we're driving around town and so forth. Six hundred and ninety-nine kids were at camp this summer. That's a tremendous number. I guess last Wednesday, we had the first concert out in Bamber with Honeysuckle Boulevard, and that was a great concert. I know the mayor was there. I talked to him. Everyone had a great time, and we'll be rotating back out to Bamber in probably in two years. We try to rotate the concerts to different parks to get more people to come and see them. If you want to know about the upcoming, we've got one coming up next Wednesday on the, excuse me, on Deerhead Lake. And if you need to know more about the concerts, and our Thursday under the pavilion, we have, you can just go to our recreation Facebook page, and they're all up there. Just call the recreation department. And last but not least, Mayor, I just want to remember to everyone that Lacey Day is the last Saturday in September, and we'll be, having Apple Fest will be there too. So last year, we had about thirty-five hundred people show up. So hopefully, we'll get that kind of turnout, get some nice weather like we had last year, and another great turnout as we head into the fall. Mayor, that's all I have.
Community man Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to go over everything Tim talked about, because it's been a real busy summer, and I have to take and congratulate Tim and Jimmy Williams and the recreation department on all the success we've had this summer with all the different programs. The summer camp turned out to be great. I mean, the parents you talked to are always happy with that program, and this year, they added more and more trips and more and more, you know, different types of programs, so it was really a tremendous success. So, you know, just congratulations, Tim, extend all the thanks to Jimmy and his staff, because they did a great job. National Night Out that we had the other night was a huge success, and that was the police department and all the emergency services coming together to try and build a bond between the people in the community and the emergency services and police. And they did it last year. They had a good turnout. This year, it was even better. It was a hot night, unfortunately, but I think everybody that was there certainly had a great time. So I thanked the police department and all the emergency services for what they did. What I really want to talk about and just, you know, piggyback on what Tim talked about is the power plant, because that's the issue that, you know, everybody's asking a lot of questions. Everybody's got a lot of concerns, and, you know, we do, you know, fortunately, get information a little bit, you know, quicker than most people. So we want to be as transparent as possible, make sure we put stuff out there. I have to agree with Tim. I felt good with the fact that we have a company coming in here that's got substance that has done these things before, that's going to take and take over the project itself and go through a decommissioning itself. You know, reducing it from the sixty-year timeframe that permitted to a ten-year timeframe certainly is probably a good thing for the community, because it's going to get that property cleaned up and back onto the tax rolls as hopefully some sort of a campus for an industrial park or some sort of use down there that will certainly bring jobs and tax dollars back into the community. So Holtech, you know, like Tim said, is the company that's going to be doing it. We have no control over who's coming in. That's the unfortunate thing. We, you know, the NRC has to approve these folks as far as licensing goes moving forward, and that's going to be a long process that's going to take the better part of the next year and a half. So that's something we'll have to see whether it goes the way it should go and whether or not Exelon ultimately does transfer title over to it. Holtech does have a, you know, a history of doing these projects, you know, but again, we don't have a say in it. So our only concern, and my only concern, I have to say, is that we have a company that has enough substance to make sure that they have the ability to do, which is like Exelon. Exelon's, you know, got a lot of power plants, a lot of assets, and we want to make sure we have a company in here the same as Exelon to be able to take and perform to the level that we need to do, because our only interest is protecting the residents of Lacey Township. My immediate concern, and I think everyone knows it, is always going to come down to the taxes. You know, we have to do everything as, that we can as a governing body to try and protect the tax, the money that we get, whether it be through the energy tax or the assessments on the property itself. And we're going to fight, like, we're going to fight like hell for the next, you know, couple of years to make sure the state doesn't screw us on that. That's something that's very, very important to us. The only thing I had an issue with, and I expressed my concern to the folks from Holtech that were there that day, they have a plan right now, which they're moving forward on, to try and get a license to also build an interim nuclear storage facility in New Mexico. Holtech has filed that application, and that, to me, is something that I'm not too sure is the right direction to go in. You know, we went down this road, the United States, the taxpayers, the ratepayers. We paid for a facility to be built in Nevada, and we paid billions and billions of dollars for that facility to be built. And in the eleventh hour, when the political people in Nevada decided, okay, we don't want it, all of a sudden, all those dollars were thrown out the window. It was paid for by, you know, the ratepayers, there's a little dollar amount coming out of every energy bill that you pay, and it's still coming out of every energy bill. And I have a real serious concern with the fact that now you have, you know, not only Holtech, but there's another company that's trying to take and license these interim storage facilities. I don't believe it's something that we should do. I don't believe the government should take and go in that direction. That's a big part of why we passed the resolution tonight, looking for support on the bill to take and compensate communities that already have the spent fuel here. At the end of the day, no matter what people say, we are an interim storage facility as of now. We never anticipated it. We're not concerned about the safety. We're concerned about the fact that if you're going to take and spend dollars to build another interim facility, that you should take those dollars, as far as I'm concerned, and divvy them out amongst all the communities throughout the country that have these power plants. And we're going to fight like hell to try and get our legislators to take and go down that path, because to me, that's the only way to go. If we take and allow these things to be built, interim storage facilities in New Mexico or any other state, and it changes, we've thrown all that money out the window again. So I, I think if we're going to take and talk about opening up Yucca Mountain again as a permanent facility, I'm all for it. But at the end of the day, even if you were ever successful in getting a license for it, the federal government is the one that has to put up the money. Department of Energy has to fund it. Any company, whether it be Holtech or anybody else that puts up the money for licensing, only goes to the point where the license is issued. And then they build it with the money that comes from the federal government, which comes from each and every one of us. So that I have a very serious concern about, and we're going to continue to, you know, fight that fight as we move forward. You know, pay the communities that have it. You know, we're very happy. We know that the storage facility is safe. We know that it's going to be there. Another thing I have a concern about, you know, especially in the state of New Jersey and the states up in the Northeast, you will never get the permits that are required, even if you build a facility in New Mexico, to transport that material across municipal lines, across county lines, across state lines. So it's just, it's a complete waste of time in my eyes to, you know, go down that road right now. I think we have to take and do everything we can to hopefully get the folks in Washington to take a good look at this and start compensating communities that went from having generation stations to becoming spent fuels, spent storage facilities. So that's my take on it. You know, I'm glad to see that, you know, the decommissioning is going to take less time, and I think when it comes down to the decommissioning, you know, we know that the NRC is going to be overseeing that whole project, so we're not concerned about that. But the future of Lacey Township, you know, the people in this town, I'll be honest with you, just like everybody sitting up here, one people, two things they're concerned about, safety, and when that tax bill comes in the mail. That's all people want to know, is that the taxes are going to stay affordable for the folks in this community. is that the taxes are going to stay affordable for the folks in this community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to dovetail on a couple of things that some of my colleagues have already said, and in particular, Committeeman Quinn. It's my firmly held belief that even if, and at the tortoise pace that Washington moves, to transport nuclear fuel over many state lines, and it would be many, if it happened to be somewhere in the Midwest or the Far West, the pushback from different states, governors, organizations, so-called grassroots organizations, different voices all around the country would be the stuff of legend. I can't foresee any scenario where they would let that happen. So I agree with my colleagues to the left, we should be compensated because we are storing that fuel now. And there is, there should, and my belief is there is a taxable value to that fuel. I want to move on, and I want to thank the police. National Night Out is something that goes on not only all around the country, but all around the state, and to voice some of the praise that colleagues have already said. We had state police, we had drone demonstrations, canine demonstrations, fire and life safety. It was fantastic. And to have that professional front end reach out to our kids and have that positive interaction with the police the first time is very, very important, and it can't be underscored enough. I'd like to move on. Something I've been researching for a couple of years now, and I'm excited to report, next meeting, September 13th. And I don't say I up here very often, and I won't tonight, because there's five of us, and we all had a hand in this. Well, there's four tonight, but there is five.
Do we count Steve?
We can count Steve.
You're in Steve's seat.
Well, I have to run the recorder. I got a demotion this evening, it appears. But I still remember how to do it. We're good.
Don't screw it up.
Okay, we got it. We're up and running. We're hot and ready here. Forty-five minutes in, so I'll wrap up shortly, but it's important. Property tax card rebate program, it's been run by a couple of different companies. I think one, as I've researched, that will be here to present, next meeting on September 13th. They have a strong product. I'm hopeful that, I'm cautiously optimistic, I'll put it that way. If we can get a break as residents, and we all have skin in this game, especially in light of some of the things coming down the pike with the nuclear plant, on items we already buy, large-ticket items included, and possibly, possibly, some big-box store items as well. If we could get a small amount off our property taxes, then that's value added, and that's a win. So we'll wait and see, cautiously optimistic, what they say. We'll keep an open mind. They'll be here on the 13th to make a presentation. So I'm looking forward to that, and I think I'm hopeful that that's something that can work. I'd like to thank the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and this is why, on the 17th of July, they were here at our community hall. They were talking about decommissioning. They were laying out a case, they were laying out a plan, and they garnered comments from the public, which is important. And it's actually legislated, it's something that they have to do. What I wanted to address here tonight as I close, is again, to quell the concerns of some of our residents. And some of the items that I've heard in that meeting and outside of that meeting, by actually some people that may not reside in Lacey Township, is, in my opinion, engaging in the politics of fear. There have been people that have been against the plant, in the planning stages of the plant since the early 60s. There were people that are against the plant for various, and in my opinion, empty reasons. When it opened in December 69, there have been people that are against the plant for the last 50 years, that it's run safely and efficiently and without airborne pollutants. There are now people and voices that are against the plant, as we sit here in 2018 and discuss decommissioning. And the politics of fear and scare tactics are things that I believe people employ when the truth isn't on their side. We have truth on our side. And when you employ the politics of fear, it does nothing to support your, it does nothing to support your, your part of the argument. It's, in my mind, it's baseless. There have been plants that have been closed safely before this plant. There have been decommissionings and reclamation projects that have been done safely and efficiently, with government oversight at every level, including state and federal. Indeed, there are decommissionings going on right now, as we speak here tonight in 2018. So opinions are one thing, but facts are stubborn things. I don't know where some of the folks get their ideas from. They're entitled to them. And I encourage them, because we want people to voice their opinions. But when I sit up here, and I was fortunate enough to be put up here by the great people of our town, I don't want people to be worried or scared needlessly. There's a lot of academic capital, not only in this town. We are exceptional Americans. We have done this before. There's a lot of brain power, insofar as engineers are concerned. This is something that's all happened before. So when I hear some of the things that I have heard in the past, my concern is, I don't want somebody that may not know or may not be exposed, like we all are in this room. We're up on our current events. We care about what happens in our town. I see a lot of the same faces, and everybody's welcome. But I don't want the politics of fear to win the day. And I want, I invite people to continue to do research. The plant, to me, has had a good run for a great many years. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just touch on a few things here. Document shredding program, just the last time I'll be reading this, because it's going to be back here in the recycling center lot on Municipal Lane here Saturday, August 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I just wanted to make everybody aware for the last time on that. 5K race, August 25th, starts in Gilly, starts at 8:30 a.m. It's a different route this year. I believe maybe Deputy Mayor McDonnell will chime in if he'd like to.
Sure.
It's going to be on Calvin Street and Newark Avenue, and they'll be closed, that roads will be closed between 8:30 and 9:00 o'clock.
Right. Yeah, it's a new route this year, so we don't have to go through the more residential areas. We're just going to do it that way. It has been certified, which was one of the big things, so that they get points, whoever runs it, they get points for running certified races. So they were in, I guess, last week, they got the certification numbers. All the stuff is going out. It's always a good time, and then there's a, the five mile, then there's a mile walk. I think Mr. Quinn's going to walk into his grandson this year, so.
Mr. Quinn is going to be on vacation with his family, just so you all know.
Convenient. He told me last year he was definitely going to do.
Heather had me do that one year, and it was, okay, would you mind walking the last person, so that everybody, you know, is in before we do the awards? And as I'm walking in as the last person, she's announcing, and Mr. Quinn comes in as the last person in the race. So good luck to any of you that want to get embarrassed at that.
So it's always a good time, and so that's it. That's all I have.
Like everybody was announced, Lacey Township, the National Night Out, what a great success it was. I just want to thank all the sponsors, the vendors, and the volunteers, and the Lacey Police for having them wonderful hot dogs there with the Captain Ganley onions on them. I don't know if anybody had them, but it's pretty good. I was asked to announce also, this Sunday is a new installation of a new minister at the Village Lutheran Church, Pastor Matt Pass. That'll be Sunday at 3:00 p.m. This past, last week, I was, I had the honor to go to the Lacey Central Alumni Game. It was kind of a little bit of a weird situation there, because I graduated from Central Regional, and I had Mayor Carmen Amato there, and they, a few people that played, one of them being Mike Caputo, who is our Class III Special Officer, he also played. So it was kind of strange, but of course, I said to them, you know, I had to be with Lacey, and I'm sure everybody heard, we did win. So it was a 1-1 for two years, this is the time, and we beat them 21 to 14. It was a great game. Everybody, Mayor Amato was going to be playing up until that day, when his wife put the hammer down and said, you're not doing it. I guess we show our age a little bit after a while.
Did you collect on your bet, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I did. Matter of fact, Mayor Amato will be taking me out to a nice beef dinner. I don't know where, but I'm going to pick the best place I can to go. But it was really an honor. Everybody had a real good time. The game was great, all the alumni from Lacey, of course. They got the plaque. I asked them to drop it, but they have it up in the high school right now, so they're displaying it there, which they're real proud of it. I just also want to let people know, Meet the Mayor is the second Tuesday at the library. Next one will be August 14th, starts at 5:30. I'm usually there until 6:30. So if you have any question, you want to, one-on-one, I'll be more than happy to. I'll end it on this. I just want to thank all the Lacey Township employees, all the volunteers, too numerous to mention, but all. I really want to thank them, and they should be proud of Lacey Township. We have a lot of great things going on here. That's all I have. I'd like to open it up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Jim Leto, Lacey Township. First, I'd like to thank you and Committeeman Quinn for coming out best there and meeting with the residents.
Yes.
Most of my neighbors appreciate it. We appreciate some of the things you got done right away. As you know, one of the things I'm always concerned about, I've mentioned over the years about visibility, traffic, you've gone out and it seems throughout the town, and I'm in town a lot of work, you know, taking care of my muggle most houses, there's a lot of corners now that the growth is over. And I think it's, you know, mentioned to the police and PPW workers, that they're right around, you know, the cool windows, triangles that are overgrown. You took care of some very good ones out there, and I appreciate that. You brought up the current proposed legislation about securing nuclear waste. As you all know, I've spoken about it, but I think the people that may watch this tonight need to understand that in 1988, President Ronald Reagan signed into law the civilian nuclear wasteland. And that charged every user of nuclear power, one mil or one tenths of one penny per kilowatt. And as of last year, that fund had raised over $42 billion, would be in dollars. However, the power companies, because Yucca Mountain was never completed, and not being political, because there's people on both sides that blocked it, but Senator Majority Harry Reid said, not in my backyard, the senator from Nevada, and that stopped it. Now, the power companies sued the federal government, said, well, wait a minute, you've collected this money since 1988 and never used it. And the court ruled, and the power companies got all that money back. But us that paid the money didn't. And now the same legislators are not coming out with this proposal to store it. But last year, when Congressman Isaac from California, and I forget the congressman from Texas, proposed using that fund money for five temporary sites around the United States, there was no co-signers. And I've said it, every politician, congressman, senator, since 2004, and governor, both parties, I've written, it's fallen on deaf ear. Now, not only do we, but Salem is in our same boat. The nuclear waste fund, and I know what people say, as soon as you try to transport it, there's going to be lawsuits. I hope there are lawsuits. I hope states file lawsuits, so it goes right to the Supreme Court, because they retain original jurisdiction when states file suits. And we don't have to deal with these judge shopping in liberal states that go on. We're in a situation, now, everybody says they want to fight nuclear waste. Nuclear, nuclear power, nuclear materials travel across state lines and city lines every day. Municipalities and states don't have the right, they're preempted by federal law, that this is a federal authority to transport nuclear waste. And I'm sure the Supreme Court will come down right on their side. But you have military-grade and civilian grade. You can't go get an MRI or other tests without knowing that there's nuclear material every day across state lines. But I would encourage you to see if Salem would join on, and I would encourage you to put our governor on the hot seat, and our two state U.S. Senators on the hot seat, to say they support this or don't support it. Because it not only impacts us, but it impacts everybody in the state of New Jersey and in the United States. This is a national issue. This is a security issue. I won't go beyond that, but this is a serious security issue. And there's things that I know that I'll tell you that maybe you can use with your people behind scenes, but to build a facility here is not feasible. And there's a lot of reasons why, ground water and everything else. So I do encourage you and support you, but I think it's something that we really have to get serious about. And I think maybe even a lawsuit against the federal government for not living up to their obligation to give it a nuclear facility, because that was the law since Reagan signed it in. Now, you know, the thing, ticks me off every time, especially when I'm driving down Lacey Road and get blasted. We've got to do something about the landscapers that cut grass along Route 9, Lacey Road, Manchester, and then they blow all the debris out into the road, where some of them are kind enough to blow it right into the storm drains. And I really think it's something that maybe you guys should look at, maybe police code enforcement, because they're dumping debris into the road and into the storm drains.
Into the body of the pack.
And so, those are my sayings, but the nuclear issue is so important. I hope you guys stay on it. I mean, I didn't think I'd be back up here talking about it, because I got to talk about it. Since 2004, and I'm telling you, I've written everywhere. So I mean, I could pull dozens of letters. It falls on deaf ear until election time.
Yeah. It's going to start becoming an issue where there's so many municipalities around the country that are dealing with it, that there's been talk of having a class action suit, everybody get into one lawsuit. That's the only way you're going to do it. And if you force that card, you're going to have a lot more power.
I can tell you this, Jim, I was in contact with a law firm out of Washington, D.C., and talked to them. They're, it's going to be difficult, because not a municipality wants to pay for it. It's going to be very, very expensive. And it's just, it's going to be very difficult to get a class action lawsuit about it. So it has been discussed. It's just a matter of getting the right firm. I talked to Congressman Garther about it.
You got consumer fraud. I'm a consumer. I paid for storage and never got this.
They took your money.
That's number one. And then they violate existing federal law by not completing what was supposed to be.
I can tell you the congressman's.
I know it's funny, because somebody's got this, because you can't keep it there. The life of concrete that it sits in is 85 years. The half-life of radiation, I think, is about a million. So how many years are you going to keep storing this? So I'm just saying, yeah, it's, but that's why we have legislators. And quite frankly, anyone that I've written to, I would never vote against it, because it hasn't done anything.
They dropped them all.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Jean.
It's over mine.
How do I put down this?
You're interested?
It's a little one.
There you go.
All right. Okay. Regina descends the Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I attended National Night Out. It was great skies. It looked like several thousand people were there, which was good. I have a question. There are traffic counters all over town. What are they for? There's so many. They're on side streets. They're on main roads. They're everywhere. Does anyone know what they're for?
It's basically that the county is doing a traffic count for various anticipated changes that they're going to do on Lacey Road.
Oh, it's the county. Okay. I wasn't sure if it was the state DOT or what. Okay. As Mrs. Leto said, I hope this committee will be very vigilant about the sale of the power plant. Now, did they actually transfer title yet, or?
No.
The license has to be transferred in 2019.
It won't close until August of 2019.
It's a whole year away.
Well, everything that's pending.
Right.
They have to get the transfer license approved for Holtech before they can even consider the transfer.
Right. Now, if the NRC doesn't approve the transfer, then.
Then it's a non-issue. But at the same time, we're trying to, and even through Senator Connors' office, get our hands on a copy of the contract, so we know what the details are. But we haven't had success in that yet.
Yeah, I don't think it's a public document yet. That's probably why.
Well, I talked to Senator Connors today and said, you know, even if we can't get that, at least we get the highlights of what's in that contract.
Okay. So when the dry-cast storage of spent fuel rod time comes, I would hope that Lacey Township would be very vigilant, along with the NRC, to ensure that the best and most durable casks are used. Too many people live too close to this power plant, and there's no margin for error with radiation at this site. Thank you.
Regina, the casks, as you know, were good for 65 years, but technology has changed already in the timeframe.
Oh, it's improved a little, absolutely.
And there's been discussions already on the fact, it's not going to wait till 60, 50. Hopefully, it's not here in 65 years, but there will be improvements made, and the product will be taken from the locations they're in and put into different type of casks as time goes forward. And believe me, we're not looking for that spent fuel storage facility to be there forever, but as long as it's there, compensators.
We have to make sure it stays sealed and stays on site.
Right.
Does not reach our homes.
And it's monitored. You've got to have monitoring on a full-time basis.
This company, Holtech, this is what they kind of specializes in, eco-storage.
Right.
They are cutting edge, I mean, and they have been cutting edge.
But did you read about their casks, that they're a little on the thinner side with the stainless steel?
Compared to your, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We need the best product, not a mediocre product. Thank you.
Thanks, Regina.
Next.
Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. Staying with the nuclear power plant, the decommissioning process is now from 60 years down to 10. But the dollars for decommissioning is the same, correct?
Correct.
Do we get any of that?
No, not any.
Nope.
What we've been told, Tony, is that the decommissioning is just under $1 billion right now. Depending on the timeframe that these folks decommission that site within, all that money will ultimately go to them. So whatever the money is that's left over at the end of the day will be their money, basically. It's all turned over from Exelon to the new company.
All right. And if they exceed that amount, that's on them too?
That's on them, yeah. Yeah. And they have a specific, you know, schedule that they would have to follow, which the NRC would disperse based on the schedule as the work proceeds to the project.
Would we be interested in how they're spending that money?
It's just like any other, we would have to go through the NRC. It's a public document we'd have to go through and get.
Go through and over request when it becomes a public document.
Right. We're in a different seat at that point.
Okay. Well, that's just an option.
Without a doubt, yeah.
Okay. Property tax rebate. Years ago, we talked about having a credit card for the township, and finally, it looks like it may come to fruition. Is this the same, the same company that BRIC uses? Because the last time we talked, which was a couple of years ago, we were talking that BRIC had a program, and we also were looking at the program in Hillsborough, which has been for like 20 years, and it pretty much.
It's not the same program.
It's not the same.
What this is, is it's a prepaid debit card, so you would, so the company that, if we enter into it, yeah. So you receive, a MasterCard logo has on it, you would load funds onto it.
Okay.
And they, we would also solicit our mom and pops and local companies to participate in the program to offer some type of rebate incentive. Also, they have 3,200 online vendors, Home Depot, Macy's, Walmart. So you can go sign in through your prepaid debit card, go to their online marketplace, make your online purchases from any one of those 3,200 vendors, and receive an incentive reward back towards your property taxes, which they pay to the town every, every February.
Yeah, because I believe last time we talked about it, it was like five or 10 years ago, the difference between the Hillsborough credit card and the BRIC, I believe we were talking about, was we couldn't find a local bank. Hillsborough uses a credit union, and they had that ability to do that with a regular, and they support the RMS.
Yeah, it's definitely not a credit card. It's a prepaid debit card. And you can automatically have funds downloaded, like if, you know, a bi-weekly paycheck, or a portion of your social security retirement check on there, so you always have funds on there. And you can also review what you're earning towards your rewards, you know, and also the vendors that, the local vendors that, you know, sign onto the contract, you know, in order for them to have the Visa and MasterCard logo, they're paying MasterCard a percentage. Their percentage that they're paying to carry that logo actually is reduced by using this online, this company as well. I think it goes from 2.5% that the company pays to MasterCard Visa to 1.8%. And then what happens is, depending on what their reward that they're offering, that 1.8 comes off of your reward. I mean, because, so you'll get the difference of that towards your reward.
So we'll be able to pay our taxes with that card?
It's going to be very hard to gain the kind of money that you're looking at, because the average property taxes in the United States is $2,500 a year, and what's New Jersey, Connecticut, New York, California? Right. So, and the average savings that some of these other states have seen by utilizing this program is 20%. Now, to get 20% through a reward incentive program that might be only offering 1.3%, if I bought this today at Walmart via the online or Macy's, it's going to be tough.
Tony, if you load that card up with a lot of money and give it to your wife, you're going to pay your taxes.
Okay. Well, I tried.
It looked, it looked promising. I'm cautiously optimistic.
Anything is better than nothing.
That's right.
And I've been after it.
And you're going to be buying these products anyway.
And there's no cost to your, there's no cost to the local vendors or to the online marketing. Whereas in the prior programs, those vendors had to pay a monthly service fee. They had to pay for their software program and for the machine. So there was a cost to the mom and pops that really kind of took them out of the mix. And this is, again, Mr. Kurtl had shared the information with me, and I'm a big rewards program person. I fly United Airlines all over the place for free, you know, because I use their online reward program. I used to use the Plenty Card, which unfortunately is out of business. I got this Fitbit for free, you know. I spent 120 bucks at Rite Aid on Plenty points, you know. So I'm a big rewards program. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
These are products we'd be buying anyway.
Correct.
Each year that you look, you pick, and again, I'm not going to get political with business news. You pick the business news you want to look at. There's an entire generation of young people that don't go to brick and mortar anymore. We're looking at 3,200 online vendors, and people paying with this card, they're going to realize the savings. And I am cautiously, now I'm getting excited about it, Tony. It's hard for me.
And don't forget, Mr. Kurtl, they also, when you had spoken to them, said that they also offer the program to tenants. There's a program for tenants that would help offset their rent, so that the rent would then go to the landlord.
Well, that's a different twist, yeah.
Yeah. So there is.
looked into the process, and they answered a lot of the hard questions, that the other companies frankly, in the past, couldn't. And 3,200 online vendors, 3,200.
Back to another situation that I wanted to bring up, just for the future. I was at the last Board of Education meeting where it was announced that $576,000 was cut from the 2018-19 budget, just, so the whole emergency meeting to try to do something, to try to recoup that. I don't think the plan is going to work. I think it's going to be short to 576,000. It was also announced that over the course, Regina, I think it was five years, 5 million?
In five, I think seven years will be cut.
Be cut. The budget will be cut even, again, by 5 million. You cut $5 million out of the budget for Board Education. There go your police resource officers, there goes some sports, there goes 35 in a class, okay? There's a lot of drastic things that, when that budget comes out and everything is retained, the Board of Education is going to say, "Well, we need all this tax money," and there should be a bunch of senior citizens around going, "Well, you ain't getting it from us." So the budget's going to fail, and guess whose lap it's going to end up, the folks?
Been there already.
Okay? Guess who's lap? So, my point to you is start thinking now about what your answer is going to be, because you know, the Board of Education is going to say, "The things I mentioned, oh, well, we can cut the police officers out and not have safety in the schools, because the Township Committee wouldn't approve our budget." You're going to be made to look like the big-
One thing, Tony, we don't, we don't vote on the school budget anymore, they just pass it. They'd have to come back to start voting on it, and I don't think they'll ever do that.
Well, if the budget fails-
How does a budget fail? Nobody votes on it.
Well, I'm saying, the way it comes up in the future, if it's, they're going to ask for a bunch of money and the residents don't pass it, doesn't-
But the residents don't vote on it anymore. The residents don't vote on it.
We don't vote on the school budget anymore.
That stopped in 2012.
Okay, my mistake then.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, we don't vote on it.
They just go ahead and pass it and raise it and whatever, I mean, it's out of our hands.
Okay, well, if that's the case, you guys won't be bad guys, do you?
It's still, it's still a huge thing, though.
Well, it is, it's going to affect the town, it's going to affect whether people want to come or don't come. And if the schools look bad, people won't come to town.
That's right.
Well, the population goes down, and then the tax base goes down, and everybody gets affected.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's, it's something to think about, think about anyway. And by the way, the resource officers, the last time we talked and we were in negotiation, who was going to pay for it?
Right now, we're just in the final stages, the resource officers will probably be coming out of the schools, and we're probably going to be putting Class Three officers in every school this year, so that we have a retired, trained police officer that carries a gun in every school. That's, you know, safety, you know, the board has been negotiating with us for quite a while now.
Well, I hope they don't just limit it to police officers retired, I mean, there's a bunch of different law enforcement type people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Combat vets and, and even maybe even-
Well, the law only says you have to be a retired law enforcement officer within a certain period of time to be known, be known as a Class Three officer, to be able to carry a gun in a school, and you have to wear the uniform. So it can't be retired vets or military people.
They can't go get qualified?
No, they have to be a retired police officer, and they can't be retired more than three years in order to be known as a Class Three officer.
But they're looking and trying to, looking to try and modify that, because there's, now you have Class Threes going in every school district throughout the state, and there's not enough people, you know, so it's-
You've got to be a big church, probably not enough.
But it's, you know, having an officer in every school is very important.
Oh, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, Teresa Barry, I'm a resident of Forked River Beach, and I just wanted to kind of add on to the discussion about the historic nuclear generator station and their closure. I attended the meeting, the public hearing that they had with the NRC a few weeks ago, and in that meeting, you know, they talked about their post-closure decommissioning plan, and I had some comments on that. And I wanted you to be aware that one of the comments was about dredging the Forked River for the residents on the southern bank of the river, where that area has been accumulating silt because of the operation of the plant. We reached out, I guess about a year ago, they were doing some DOT dredging, and we reached out to the power plant and said, "Can we find out, you know, what's going on here?" And they said, "This was a separate project, it wasn't run by them," and that they were not responsible for any dredging. However, they did have an agreement with the Board of Public Utilities in 1966 that they would return the area to navigable conditions.
It's original habitat, yeah.
Original, yeah. And the, so a lot of the areas were left out of this other project, and now the Exelon has said, well, at least one representative of Exelon had said, "This is, you know, not being considered." So I just wanted the committee to be aware that, I mean, there's a lot of residents along the river there who were not taken care of by Exelon.
Is this along Channels Point in that area, or down?
This is between Barnegat Bay and the Lacey Alps, all along there, further out toward the bay.
The Hawaiian streets, as I would call them?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, this was, since then, you know, I did make comments at the public hearing, and I also sent a letter to Exelon, just informing their management that this is a concern that we have and we wanted it to be addressed. So, you know, I wanted you to know about it, something that I think there's probably 300 or 400 houses in that area that are affected, and, you know, even if they transfer to Holtec, whether this deal goes through or not, somebody, either Exelon or Holtec, has to retain responsibility to the residents. They've used the river for 50 years, and I think they have responsibility for us. I did have, they did some dredging back in 1997. I have some articles about that and a map of the area that I can give to you if you'd like it for reference.
Sure. We're going to have some ongoing meetings with Exelon moving forward, so, you know, certainly that'll be one of the issues we'll have to bring forward, you know.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bender.
Harry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue.
I got here a little bit late, don't know if you went into detail on number one or not. Blocks 1852 and 1853, rather than going on-
It's supposed to be 18, yeah, 1852.
Yeah, I corrected it on.
Yeah, it's the parcels adjacent to the Walters Development Site, behind the parcel that we own on Lacey Road.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's kind of like behind JT Bagels, that area.
Got it, got it.
Everybody knows where JT's is.
Yep, absolutely. I got, had an accident right there.
Oh, did you?
Came out a number of years ago. Anyway, we were talking about saving taxpayers money, et cetera, with your plan, it sounds like a wonderful plan, but I'd just like to bring up that, in many of the communities along Barnegat Bay, a lot of the towns have made improvements as far as shoreline protection, and people get discounts on their flood insurance, and I think it's time that Lacey Township should start considering doing the same thing, just a comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Thank you.
Pam Morales, Ano Moore and Michelle Court. And the Lacey Township. Yes, people from the street at the court. It hasn't been tarred since 1988. There's holes, stones come up, when the snowplow goes by, he picks up the manhole, he picks up the water, cover, all, pushes them in the, into the woods, and it's a mess. And everybody, I wrote a letter, because I called the street department, and they said, you know, "We're going to enter the township," and everybody signed it. See what we can do.
You're talking about right off Bay Way, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never, well, the builders tarred it.
Bob Line built that, I think, didn't he? Bobby Line built that?
Yeah.
I think Rinderer built some of those there, yeah.
Yeah, that was the first house.
Okay, I know where it is.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really a mess.
Yeah, what we'd have to do is, you know, we'll take the petition, of course, the mayor, you know, will take it, but we'll have to send somebody out there and look at it. Our capital projects are pretty much done for this year.
Yeah.
But we'll put it on the list for next year, and the ones that get top priority, the ones that are in the worst shape. But you're bringing it-
Yeah, because my house was built in 1988.
Yeah, yeah.